Welcome, everybody. Going to read my usual. In response to Governor Baker's declaration of a public health emergency and the related emergency executive order dated March 12, 2020. Town and Situate public meetings shall meet remotely until further notice. This meeting is being recorded and will be posted following the meeting. Public comment will be available by Zoom. Please note the chat feature has been turned off. Community members can also email myself at email p gates at sit.org with questions and/or comments. Before I call this meeting to order, I just want to let everybody know that for purposes of Governor Baker's order, this is technically a remote meeting. However, I don't think you can all tell, but four school committee members as well as Superintendent Burkhead are all at the Gates Middle School in one classroom to show that we are comfortable in having folks back in our schools. We're not wearing masks. We're more than six feet away, so just want to make that statement. We're actually probably 12 feet away in most cases. So just want to alert all those participants and those that may be watching this on the recording. So again, I will need to call roll calls on anything that we're voting on tonight because it is technically a remote meeting. So with that, I'd like to call the August 31st, 2020 Situate School Committee meeting to order. Again, at 6:02 via roll call vote. I'm going to start to my left, Long.
Yes.
Randalini?
Yes.
Limblum?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to confirm, Mr. Hayes is not with us onsite, but he is part of the meeting. Okay, moving forward on the agenda, acceptance of minutes. Any comments on the July 13 minutes, or I can accept a motion?
I had no comments. So unless anyone else does, I'll move that we approve the minutes of the July 13th school committee member as presented.
Motion by Mr. Hayes?
Second.
Second by Mr. Long. Roll call vote, I'll go reverse. Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Limblum?
Yes.
Ms. Randalini?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
And Gates, yes. The minutes are passed unanimously. Moving on the agenda, new business, busleys. Dr. Dutch.
Good evening. You have a memo in your packet detailing the information regarding the bus that we are looking to lease, as well as the details of the annual cost for three years. We have moved from transporting our students from Boston from a contracted position to doing it with our own staff and our own bus, which is what necessitates the need for an additional bus. The funds for this bus have been budgeted as part of the Metco grant, so it is not coming out of our regular budget. So I'd be looking for a motion and would be happy to answer any questions through the chair.
Any questions by the committee?
I had one.
You're up, Mr. Hayes.
Okay, it's for Bill. And Bill, paying the lease out of the Metco grant, does that have any effect on the regular services we provide our Boston kids?
Mr. Hayes, is that for Superintendent Burkhead?
Yes, I'm sorry, yeah.
Okay.
No, that doesn't, that does not change the service to our students. We still have full service for our students, Mr. Hayes.
Terrific, thanks.
It's an alternative way to, we had a contracted bus, it's a cheaper way to get another bus online to help.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to make sure the public was aware of that.
Absolutely, thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I have one, sorry, one follow-up question for Superintendent Burkhead. So Ed, going forward, are we going to try to put this above the two-third, one-third line split with the town, or is this something that we're going to keep and cover under the Metco grant going forward?
I think at this point, it's under the Metco, and we're meeting with town officials next week on a variety of issues. That will be one of them, on our bus leases and where this particular bus falls. So, to be determined for next year.
Anything else? I do have one question. I guess it would be for Dr. Dutch. I think that part of the reason that this lease, oh, sorry, that we were using a separate bus company last year at least was the lack of bus drivers. Are you confident that we will be able to staff this bus?
Yes, we already have a driver for this bus, for this route, so I have no concerns about that.
Excellent. And do you have an estimate in terms of how much this could potentially save the district in terms of costs?
It will probably save you about 50% of what you were spending to transport these students, in particularly, these are elementary students that will be transported. So about 50% of the cost, so about $30,000 a year.
Okay, great. And you do need a vote, correct?
I do.
All right, and just, I just, I did look at the lease, this is through Santander, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, so that I didn't have a conflict, because I think our current leases are with Wells Fargo, just wanted to make sure that that was accurate.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. All right, we're going to have a motion.
I'll make a motion that the Situate School Committee approve the lease negotiated for, as presented, for the assistance and transportation of our Boston children through the Metco Fund grant as presented.
Motion by Mr. Hayes, or second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Long. Roll call vote, I'll go first. Gates, yes. Limblum?
Yes.
Randalini?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, good work, Superintendent Burkhead and Dr. Dutch.
Thank you.
Moving on to the athletic fees.
Thank you, Chairman Gates. So we just wanted to keep everyone apprised of athletics. I know there was information sent out via our Thursday Thoughts and discussed, I believe, the last school committee regarding the MIA and DESE's commitment to having fall sports and basically broke the season up into four shorter seasons. And with each season, with the fall season starting a couple days after kids come back, what we wanted to talk about tonight is the fee structure. And then I'll, I know Athletic Director Ambriana is here, I can have him say a few words about the actual, how the four seasons are set up. But the fee structure will stay in place for each season. It's a $300 per season cost to play sports for a cap of 900. The good news is, because there's a fourth season and us not wanting to incur more cost to individuals, but also allowing us to attain enough in fees to support the athletic program, that that fourth season, should a child so choose to participate, would be free. So in effect, you play the four seasons for the price of three. So we thought that was a fair and equitable way to reward athletes that play all sports and encourage them all to play all seasons. So there's no increase in the fees, and we'll be getting that specific information out as soon as possible, likely this week. Anything to add, AD Ambriana?
I think we need to unmute you.
Chairman Gates, can you hear me?
Is he there?
He's all set.
All right, I know, yeah, Bill, Superintendent Burkhead put it perfectly. We thought, we wanted to keep it right about the 300 with the four season potentially free. We're excited, you know, to have a couple sports have been given the green light. We're still working, you know, hard amongst all the ADs in the Patriot League and, you know, district, you know, the district itself, you know, to kind of come up with a, you know, definite plan for what September 18th will look like. I know a couple leagues are moving some things around and still moving some parts around because everything's changing, but, you know, I say it all the time, I think the biggest thing that, you know, we can give our kids is hope. And, you know, by getting the green light and, you know, having, you know, significant, you know, restrictions and guidelines to each sport, but playing them safely, you know, I know the kids will be super excited. So, you know, we will be updating you throughout, you know, the week, the next couple weeks as far as any changes or anything along those lines. But as of right now, we're going to keep it right, you know, at the 300 per season with that fourth season free.
Thank you, Ambriana.
Great, thanks. Any questions or comments from the committee?
I just have a comment.
Oh, you, you're up, Mr. Hayes.
And I just wanted to thank Peter and Bill and the whole team as far as working on this, and I think this is a very equitable and good solution. And, you know, our hope is that for 2021, anybody that wants to play a sport and their, and their sport, that it's going to, it's going to happen. And I appreciate all the hard work.
Yeah, I just want, I want to commend Ms. Ambriana too. I think he started last year when we were building fields, and he didn't have any fields for our teams to play on. So now he's been dealt a pandemic to deal with, so I know it's not what you were imagining your first 12 months to look like, but thank you for your, for your work.
Pete, may I ask one more question, please?
You may.
And it's to AD Pete. Couple of meetings ago, when we met with the architect and overseer of the, of the high school athletic project, he said if it wasn't 100% done and they are off the property by September 1st, then he would, he would be very disappointed. I haven't driven there and looked at it in a week, but I was wondering if you could tell me if it's done and their work is still up there?
Mike, who's that for?
Pete and Ambriana.
Can you hear?
Can you hear me?
Now I can.
All right, yeah, good question. So as of last, last week, everything is officially all done. They have left the premise. Every field now is lined, you know, for the multiple sports that each field will be having. And everything as of right now is good to go. And I know the company has already officially left and everything is all ready and before September 1st, so we're good there.
That's great. I, last time I was there was last week, and it looked like they were going to make it, but I haven't been able to see it this week, so I'm glad to hear that, Pete.
Yeah, it's exciting. They did a great job.
Mike, you're, you're frozen, but I did hear Mr. Bedrow's weekly update today, and it looks like there's obviously still some punch list items to be completed, but.
Yep, that's understandable.
As Mr. Ambriana says, it looks like the majority of the work has been completed and, you know, as with any project of that scope, there's some things to be done. But I know my family went up there today and they enjoyed it, and I think it's a great asset to the town, so we thank the citizens for approving that and for all those that were involved.
Well said.
All right. Moving on, actually, we don't need to vote on that, correct? Okay. All right, moving forward to public comment. I just want to make up for my technological blunder last week where I attempted to show the policy regarding public comment. Before we enter into that session, I'm going to try to overcome that shortcoming and share with you the policy, just read through it thoroughly. Before doing so, I just want to continue to stress, we encourage public participation. We want public participation, we just want to make sure everyone understands of the policies that are in place to ensure that the school committee can efficiently and effectively manage their meetings and their roles. So I'm going to try this right now, I hope that it works. Do you guys see it? Wow.
Good job.
Okay. Again, for all those, this is not to criticize or make people hesitant to make comments, this is just our policy, and we are a school committee, and we need to act in accordance with our policies. This is policy BEDH, public participation at board meetings. I'm just going to read this for you all. "All regular and special meetings of the Situate School Committee shall be open to the public. The school committee will have two five-minute public comment sessions at all regular meetings. Executive sessions will be held only as prescribed by the statutes of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The school committee desires citizens of the district to attend its meetings so that they may become better acquainted with the operations and the programs of our local public schools. In addition, the committee would like the opportunity to hear the wishes and ideas of the public. In order that all citizens who wish to be heard before the committee have a chance and to ensure the ability of the committee to conduct the district's business in an orderly manner, the following rules and procedures are adopted. Speakers will be allowed five minutes to present their material. The presiding chairperson may permit extension of this time limit. Topics for discussion must be limited to those items listed on the school committee meeting agenda for that evening. Improper conduct and remarks will not be allowed. The famatory or abusive remarks are always out of order. If a speaker persists in improper conduct or remarks, the chairperson may terminate that individual's privilege of address. All remarks will be addressed to the chairperson of the meeting. Speakers may offer such objective criticisms of the, sorry. Speakers may offer such objective criticisms of the school operations and programs as concern them, but in public session, the committee will not hear personal complaints of school personnel nor against any member of the school community. Under most circumstances, the administrative channels are the proper means for disposition of legitimate complaints involving staff members. Votes will not be taken. Responses to concerns will be made only by the superintendent or chair or other members at the chair's discretion. On those issues that can be resolved by directing citizens to the appropriate staff, the superintendent or chair will advise the citizen of appropriate steps to take." Again, I just wanted to go over those. I don't think, at least in my tenure, they've never been shared, and I don't even think I knew there was a policy regarding public comment, but just wanted to make sure that all those that have been participating now more than ever are aware of those. So I appreciate your attention and understanding to that. With that being said, we are now in public comment. If you have a comment, please choose the emoticon at the bottom and raise your hand, and I will call on you. Also, please be sure to identify yourself. Shan Morrissey, you're up.
Hi, I'm a, this is Shan Morrissey, I'm a teacher at Gates. I want to thank everybody involved for getting the HVAC reports out to us. I understand that all the schools have UNIVENTS in classrooms, so that's different than Gates. And there wasn't anything in the report about air exchange. And the EPA and the CDC and the Society of HVAC Engineers all discuss air exchange, indoor/outdoor air exchange extensively, and they caution automated systems like we have at Gates, so I was wondering if we could get more information about that?
Okay, thank you. We will be, Bill, are we going to be addressing the HVAC report tonight?
Yes, I wrote down Ms. Morrissey's question, we can find that information out.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments at this time? Seeing none, we will move forward with leadership report. Superintendent Burkhead?
Thank you, Chairman Gates. I'd like to start off by sharing some really great news. We had our teachers' report back in person today at all of our schools. We kicked it off with a superintendent's welcome, and there was close to 300 faculty and staff on the Zoom call as each staff member was at their respective schools. So I want to thank you all for your dedication and commitment. And over the next 10 days, we'll be having professional development and a well-organized plan to reimagine how education looks, prepare our teachers, empower professionals, and entire staff on safety protocols and preparation, so our students and staff will be ready for September 16th. So excited to have people back in the building, to hear laughter, to start meeting all of our great faculty and staff, so it was a really, really good day here in Situate. And next, I want to talk about a little bit the school safety. We continue to be committed to transparency, and holding safety is the highest standard for our staff and students. And we made a commitment before allowing any of the staff or students back into the building for having our HVAC and air quality all tested internally as well as through third-party external vendors. We also did a few other things that I want to share that we believe went above and beyond just to ensure everyone's safety. So the first thing we did was we took, the Mass Teachers Association has a very comprehensive health and safety checklist. We were able to access that and answer each of the questions on that. A lot of that information was covered in our plan, but certainly wanted to make sure that we use that document as a, as one of our guides, and we were able to share that out with our teachers and our community. It's also on our website, along with all these other documents. And this was on our Thursday Thoughts joint statement that we sent out last week. The next thing we sent out was an internal document. We thought it was important to supply our community with an executive summary. A lot of this language gets really deep, and although I've kind of, I've learned a lot about HVAC and air quality in the last five weeks, we thought it was important to put it in terms of what we were doing in our schools for our building safety and preparation of our ventilation HVAC. So we did an executive summary that has been shared with our school community, also on our website. It summarized the work being performed in our school, including ventilation. We repaired all the sinks and windows, hand sanitizing stations around the schools, hand washing stations are on order and will be ready for schools, and personal protective equipment has been ordered and is in, ready to be distributed. So that is all covered in that document for everyone to see, and we will continue to do that periodically, update our community and be as transparent as possible on what we are doing to keep everybody safe. And over the weekend, I shared out documents, and it's also on our website. We had the independent contractor reports on HVAC from Commercial Boiler Systems, Inc. and Logic Automation Services. They came in and looked at all of HVAC, assessed it, and fixing our HVAC systems and any that aren't completely fixed are being fixed. And if that's the case, those rooms are not being used, but we're pretty close to having that completely finished. Air quality reports were done by Richard K. Bowen of FLI Environmental, and the conclusion that they made, and they did all their schools for air quality testing, the measurements of IAQ parameters tested by direct reading instrumentation on all schools appeared well within applicable, applicable guidelines. So that report was strong, and it was also shared and on our website. So I think we're in a real good shape. We will also, just for everyone's knowledge, we will also continue to do periodic air quality checks, because as we know, there's not many people in the buildings, and then when students come back, we want to get another test just, and we will continue to do that with our HVAC systems as well. So that'll be ongoing, and we'll be able to report that out to our community and to our school committee. So that's not a one-time deal, we'll continue to do that, and we'll also have other third parties come in and validate that work, because it is of the highest importance, importance to us. So we're happy to see those reports, we're happy to share them with you. I want to again thank, you know, Facilities Director Kevin Kelly, Assistant Facilities Director Bob Dillon, and for making that happen, because it's not happening in all the districts in the state. So that was, we're pretty proud of that, and so thank you for all your hard work on that. The next thing I want to share is our update. We've started a Situate Public Schools Medical Advisory Committee, and last week, we had a larger group meeting with our district nurse leader, our school nurses, the Board of Health Director, the town nurse, administration, and we also consulted with our school physician. And the topic of conversation was the governor's metric for COVID. And we talked about the color-coded metric itself as, as just one barometer. For example, right now, we're in Situate is in the green, it was formerly in the non-shaded or white area, and that fluctuates. What we had talked about is getting the information from this medical community to assess that metric and see what other, we're also looking at other documents from other schools and what they're using. The metric alone is not necessarily the end-all, be-all of making decisions on, according to the medical experts. For example, if you have four case, four new cases and they're in a nursing home and they don't impact the school, then, you know, that has to be considered, talked about. The flip side of that, if there's four new cases and it's all at one school in one day or one week, we have to also consider that as well, so location. We also talked about geographic, including the geographic numbers for the surrounding towns. You know, we had talked about our staff coming from other places and students in some cases, so we want to look at geographic locations in their numbers as well as part of this, so it'll be a multifaceted examination of all the data and science that is current. So the next meeting, we'll, we'll look at that further, and we'll devise an outline for the school committee's purview on what the medical board's, committee's recommendation will be for moving between phases and opening and closing schools. Simply using the governor's metric, we feel is not, not comprehensive at all. So we'll be working on that, coming up with that, and be able to answer the questions that a lot of people are asking us. You know, when do we move from a hybrid to a fully in-person? When do we move from a hybrid to remote, vice versa? What's our strategy and plan for that? So I want to let people know, we are working on that, we are working on that with medical experts. We will be also in collaboration with Department of, the State Department of Health and DESI and their recommendations. So we'll be using all that information to make a, a decision on our recommendation forthcoming, hopefully in our next meeting. And I think that's it. The next thing will be, will lead into our, our hybrid and remote models, we'll have an update for that as well tonight.
Great. I guess we'll, any comments or questions from the school committee on Mr. Burkhead's report?
I have one comment, Pete, if I may.
I have a question. Bill, could you elaborate on the, the timeline of the, all the work that was done on the, for the HVAC report? Like, we were projected to not even have it done for another month, but just curious as to, like, how quickly it happened, or if there were any delays? as to, like, how quickly it happened or if there were any delays?
Thank you, Mr. Burkhead. Timely, HVAC is a lot of work that we're trying to handle, folks looking at, and we've had another company, and that's been, that's all a heavy lift. There's a lot of buildings, a lot of old buildings. I forgot to mention that, I think, in one of the reports, it was mentioned that the schools have never been in better shape due to all the work that's being done. There was a log gym, a lot of schools are starting to do this and have air quality tests. You know, I just want to thank, again, Bob Dillon for his connections and having to be able to get a company to come in and do a week's worth of work for us. A lot of, he's booked out now through October, I believe. And so we're very fortunate to have him, the FLA Environmental come in and do that work in a week's time where they're booked through October right now. The HVAC has been going on for several weeks and will continue until the last, you know, the last part is fixed.
Thank you.
Pete, may I make a comment? Yeah, I just wanted to thank Bill and Bob Dooch and our facilities guys. I mean, it would be very interesting to know how many cities or towns out of 351 have met this basic and most important threshold as far as getting our kids back to school and the amount of work and the dedication and the expertise and the cooperation with, Bill, you and your colleagues is just blowing me away. And I can't tell you how appreciative I am on this. It's made, I think, teachers and parents much more comfortable that I have talked to. It certainly makes the school committee's job about 1,000% more easier, and I'm all in favor of that. And I just can't thank you enough for this, getting this, this basic threshold done so quickly and well.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes.
I just want to echo what Mr. Hayes said. I don't know how we did this. I feel like we've been having problems with our, I don't know, generally our ventilation in all of our schools for some period of time. I'm assuming that the fact that, I'm assuming that most of this does qualify under the CARES reimbursement act, which, from a financial perspective, allowed this to happen. But I just want to thank all, and I'm sure I don't know everyone that was involved, but from Superintendent Burkhead to this mysterious Bob Dillon and everyone else. I really can't thank you enough. As Mr. Hayes said, it's made our job as a school committee much easier. We now have proof and the fact that this, I still don't know how every single room in every building was completed in roughly a week's time. I think that that's pretty outstanding. And again, I don't know how we did that, but hopefully we can utilize that efficiency and effectiveness going forward in the Situate Public Schools District. So thank you to all that were involved.
And Pete, if I just may add, I think this is concrete proof that as we move forward in collaboration with, with Bill and the administrative team, that we, we feel we have the people in place that we need to have in place, number one. Number two, that it shows to our parents, our students, teachers, and staff that we are committed and mean what we say when the five of us on the school committee are 100% committed to what is best for each and every one of the 3,000 kids and 500 staff members that, that use the Situate Public Schools. And there's no doubt in my mind about that, that it's our top priority to do what's best for all of our students. And especially in this time period, it's just an unbelievable job. And I can't thank everybody involved enough.
I agree. I left out Dr. Dutch. I'm sure he had some significant hand in this as well.
I think so.
He just sits there too. He's not taking the credit for it. But I'm sure that he had something to do with it. Again, pandemic or not, the fact that we got so much work done in such a short period of time is just, is just amazing. And I think that it's just a precursor of things to come as well in terms of taking an action plan or making an action plan and concluding it. So thank you very much.
The more and more Bob's involved, the more and more I see, at least so far until we all get back into the same building. He's kind of like the godfather in the library during the wedding scene, taking care of all family business. And I get the feeling that, you know, there's a lot going on that we don't know about that he's working on our behalf, Bob. And thank you.
Thank you. All right, if there's no other comments, I guess, shall I introduce? Yeah, sorry, Superintendent Burkhead.
Thank you, Chairman Gates. I just wanted to add one, one more item since we brought up Dr. Dutch's name. I think we've got some good news to share. We've just received our first allotment of reimbursement money for COVID in the fiscal year 2020 in the amount of $136,500, which was, we did not get any of our funds or requests denied. So I think that goes a long way into, A, we're getting our money back, but B, we're being prudent and smart about our purchases. It is kind of a guessing game. You put in money, and then you don't necessarily know if you'll get reimbursed. So we really have to think, you know, looking at the guidelines to make sure that, you know, whenever we make a purchase, we ask the question, is this reimbursable? Because if we, if it isn't, it's a big hit for us. So that was a good sign when we got that money back, that we were 100% on receiving that. We look forward to getting more of our funds reimbursed.
Excellent. Thank you. Should I introduce Ms. Arnold? Ms. Arnold, you're up next with the Assistant Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Chairman Gates. Superintendent Burkhead or Chairman Gates, can you share the screen of that PowerPoint? Actually, it's a PDF now, or I can see if I can share it. Do you see it? Can you see that?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Yeah, sorry. That was on you. Yes, we can see it. There you go.
So thank you. I'd just like to give a brief overview of our reopening plan. We spent a lot of time working on this over the summer. We had principals, central office leadership team, and curriculum coordinators and department chairs working on this all together. We spent numerous hours in the Gates dining commons and in classes throughout Gates, classrooms, I should say. You know, most of the time, we always had masks on, and most of the time, we were six feet apart. But when we weren't, we were at least three feet apart and usually closer to six. So I just wanted to say that upfront. We are trying to be very responsible. So spending a lot of time on this, and why isn't it moving up there? Just the overview, as you recall, back in the spring, DESI or Department of Elementary and Secondary Education mandated that all Commonwealth School Districts submit three plans for this upcoming school year. So the three plans we, that were specified were a full in-person return. Everybody comes back. That's, that's great. You know, there's no change in our normal way of doing business as a school district. Hybrid plan or a full remote plan. And on August 10th, at the school committee meeting, you determined that you would approve our hybrid plan. So the overarching theme when we went into this work was talking about the strain and anxiety many of our students, families, and staff members were feeling. So we had that at the forefront of all our plans, making sure that we had things in the plan for check-ins, regular check-ins with students, interactions with students as much as possible. So I just want to make everybody aware that that is primary in all of our discussions. So this year, teaching and learning will look and feel very different from the last spring when we had remote learning only. The expectations are different in that we are required to take attendance. Students will be assessed and given grades. We've looked at our curriculum, and we know that it wasn't real, we didn't have to deliver curriculum to the extent we would have liked in the spring. And as we were going at, we were creating as we went along, we didn't always do a fantastic job at that, giving all the guidance and understanding exactly what students needed at that time, like all of the other districts across the Commonwealth. I just want to freely admit that. But, so this year, one of the things that we knew had to be front and center was rigor back to rigor back in our curriculum. So we're, our curriculum hasn't changed, but what we're doing is we're looking at the most important things that we want to be sure our students are, understand and are able to do by the end of the school year, no matter what grade or course. So we spent a lot of time talking about that. And I know that teachers who are doing that work over these next 10 days as well, that's their voices, their voices are very important because they are right in front of the kids every day, and they know. So our hybrid plan provides a combination of in-person and remote learning. So we talk a lot about cohorts. So we divide, we have three cohorts. Whoops, I always do that. We have three cohorts. And two cohorts, the cohorts A and B, are those students that go, that attend school in person. So there are two models, but elementary students are in school Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, either in the morning or the afternoon, whether they're in A or B cohort. But for the high school and Gates, they are in school two days a week. So one cohort is Monday and Tuesday, the second cohort is Thursday and Friday. This is for those students who are attending in-person learning at the schools. However, all students are remote learners on Wednesday. And that's a time when teachers might interact with students, give a little extra help. Some teachers are holding office hours. That's predominant in the middle and high school. So that's extra time that maybe a specialist, a literacy specialist, math specialist in the elementary school, or a special educator might connect with students on that Wednesday. And then the afternoon, it's professional development for all of our faculty. And that's it. That's basically, that is what we're doing in A and B, cohorts A and B. So for cohort C students, those are the students who are remote-only students, and we call that our Blue Plan students. And they will, talking about all of that social-emotional importance that we need to support everybody's social and emotional health, we determine that all students will interface or have a connection to remotely, to all of their classmates and teachers during a period every day for elementary called Connect 10. So elementary students will connect, check in remotely on those Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday days. And on Wednesday, they will join their building-based classmates for remote learning opportunities. And high school students will be able to interface with teachers on Connect 10 every day that they have a course, that certain course. And they will also, on Wednesday, those teachers at Gates and High School may produce office hours. So they may have office hours during that time on Wednesday. So I hope that helps everybody have an overview of the two plans. They, we spent a lot of time this summer working on them, and I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize many of these people who participated and worked really hard through reflection and reworking and feedback in order to develop this plan or these plans. And they are the principals, again, who gave up much of their vacation time to do this, central office team, and also curriculum coordinators and department chair who worked beyond those big meetings with me to refine some of these things. So I really appreciate all of that help, and I noticed that some of them are on this call tonight, some of the department chairs and curriculum coordinators. So thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Arnold. Any questions, comments from the school committee?
I had one question, Peter.
All right, Mike, you can go.
Thank you, Jen. And, I mean, again, I can't thank everybody involved in this process enough for the work and dedication and the expertise and the collaboration that's getting our kids back to school. And it just amazes me. And, you know, each time you go through the plan, in my view, it gets better and better. I do have one question, and it's, it's as a result of some conversation with parents. And, and I was hoping you could talk a little bit about what went into the thoughts and determination that while high school and Gates will go each cohort twice a week, why split the elementary kids apart from that model?
So I think it basically came down to the fact that elementary school students need, all students need that connection, but the schedule for elementary school students is a lot simpler. And we were able to do that pretty simply. And that way, they get connection with their teachers and classmates every day within their cohort. And then the remote students only, those cohort C students, connect with them every day as well. So for the high school and the middle school, it's a lot more complex to do that because they have a rotating schedule. They're not on a five-day schedule with the same, they're not on a five-day week schedule with the same classes every day. So that's, that's how we arrived at that.
Great. And I, and thank you. And, you know, I agree with it, obviously. You know, parents are concerned about childcare and it makes it more difficult with childcare and considerations. But again, my answer has been is that our number one responsibility of the 3,000 kids, and, and, and I agree that the getting our elementary kids in front of teachers four days a week, five days, including Wednesday, but getting them in the building four days a week is imperative. And, and I agree with you that, and appreciate that that was the number one consideration of you and your team.
Yes, thank you.
That was a question, Pete.
Mr. Brandeley.
So Jen, thank you. So what exactly will remote Wednesdays look like then for either a hybrid model or even when our fully remote kids come in and mix with the hybrid kids? So for example, I'm looking at, what I'm curious about as a parent too, is like, so will they have assignments that they need to pass in? If so, will it be six assignments a day or eight assignments a day? What types of things will they be? Will they be, you know, will it be an online platform? Will they be submitting things through Google? Is there requirements for the day also? Well, go ahead. You can maybe, I have another question.
So a number of things will happen. Teachers will give assignments before Wednesday. So the, the students will all have their assignments before Wednesday. They will have time, we call that when they're not interfacing with teachers remotely. We call that asynchronous. So while they're in asynchronous learning, it's basically they're working on any of their work that has been assigned or that has been assigned or any projects. So in during the remote period in the morning, that will look different depending on the school level. So high school, it could be, and middle school is going to be more of a check-in kind of thing. And they can get remote instruction, but it's not like they're having a class, a remote class. And for elementary school, it's, it's similar in that they could get some remote instruction for a short period of time, review or reteach something, something students are, or are, need some more help with or more time on. And then also, you know, counseling sessions, special educations, services could be, could be given during that time. And also like for elementary and math school, I think they have math support as well. But for elementary, math specialists and literacy specialists will provide group lessons or one-on-one remote support. So that's kind of what is, what the answer to that question. As far as the platform, we'll continue to use Google Suite and all of those things. So teachers will be using Google Classroom and the features that they've always used with that.
Yes. Just wanted to add to that question there. So what we're also doing, I think with these documents, and I want to thank Assistant Superintendent Arnold and our team for all the hard work and putting this together. I would assimilate this to kind of like our initial reopening plan and then the more detailed plans that came out. I think this is a real good roadmap that gives people an idea of what the hybrid model looks like and the blue model looks like and a lot of good detail about what each school is doing. Elementary is together and in the middle and high school are now working that our teachers are back on even more specifics and details. So we can kind of get out there to families before the start of school, a kind of a day in a life schedule and situation for what our, what our students will encounter when they come into schools, as well as working on an orientation day for students and then some type of orientation for parents as well to go over those documents once we get them all free to school. So there's more detailed information to come that documents we send out are a lot more detailed than we originally planned. And now what we're doing is working on a school-based document so we can have parents and students understand with great detail their own personal schedule and how that will, that will look for every day for all models.
Great, thank you.
Bill, when did you say that would be available for parents? Or did, or you're working on it?
I didn't, but now the question's on. So it's a working, it's a work in progress, definitely before school starts. So yeah, we're, our goal is always to get everything out as soon as possible. I know, and I know I really appreciate the parents out there who got this document and they've been eagerly waiting for that and very patient. And you've been awesome. And so I hope this answers a lot of your questions. In the meantime, before we get that document out, you know, likely next week. If you have any questions, I know some principals are still having forums, but please just reach out now that you've got the document to ask your principal specific questions to your child. And we'd be happy to answer all those questions. So I think that your questions will be answered right away. So I recommend that, so you don't have to wait for the next set of more detailed instructions to come out. If you do have questions now, we'd be happy to answer them and put your mind at ease on what your child's education will look like in, on September 16th.
Great, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the committee?
Well, one more for me, Pete, again.
Jen, is there a plan moving forward for how frequently? You're going to be, this plan will be evaluated?
Um, that's a really good question, Janice. We didn't, I didn't set out a formal calendar, but yes, we will reflect on it regularly. I would say that from my department chair and curriculum coordinator meetings, I will reflect with them. And I know that the superintendent will reflect, will ask questions and look for feedback at our district leadership team meetings, which happen every week. And so my guess would be that we'd be discussing it every week. You know, we'd have to have multiple weeks of data before we make any major changes. So we'll look at that intently to, you know, continue to provide the best we can for our students.
Pete?
Sure.
And I would also add, I think it's a great question. In fact, it's been, it's been asked by a few people. I think it's, you know, we should be, we should be assessing all our curriculum, no matter what model we're in. So I think now we've got the, kind of like everything else we're doing, it's one more layer with COVID. So I think what we'll look to do and be accountable for is evaluating our curriculum while simultaneously evaluating their plans and what phases we're in. So we, thank you for the question. So I think like Ms. Arnold said, we don't have the data yet, obviously haven't started it. But it's an excellent question that we will be committed to evaluating our plans and reporting back out to the committee and the community on what we find and how we plan on improving it and continuing to do the great things that we're doing and also to improve what we're not doing so well. And that will include, I likely would thank surveys to parents and students and get their input on how things are going. So we can improve it continuously as we move forward.
Peter?
Any other comments or questions?
Peter? Peter?
Ms. Arnold, I just have one. I'm not sure that's, I can even, why are you laughing at me? Oh, sorry, Mike.
Sorry.
I'll come back to you. I think you did. Hold on. Sorry, I'm on, I muted.
Thanks a lot.
Sorry, Mike, I had my headphones on mute. I apologize. I just have one question for Ms. Arnold, I think. And if, if you, if you want to wait till next time, it's fine. I think it's, as Superintendent Burke had mentioned previously, today was the first day for teachers and others to be, to return to school. I know you touched on this in the past, but would you be able to give us a little bit of an update on what they're focusing on for their first, well, through the 15th, through the 15th really? And if you're not prepared to do it today, I understand, but if you are, we'd be welcome to hear it.
I can give you a brief overview. It won't be as wonderful as if I were to sit down and make a formal one, but there are a number of, there are plethora of things that they will be focusing on. So today they, they had their welcome and overview and chance to get back into their buildings and be with their colleagues and their principals. So it was all building-based. Tomorrow, the schools will go into more depth about our plans, the hybrid and blue plan. So that teachers feel really prepared with that and can answer, so that they're clear about their responsibilities as well as what the student, they expect from their students. Then every afternoon through the, throughout the 10 days, people will be working with, whether in their departments or across a grade level, district-wide or a specific content areas, for instance, all the nurses will work together. Dr. Boebert, the special education director, will have special educators working together. So that there's, there are opportunities for that every day. We are doing two intensive days on technology. We are of course giving teachers time within their buildings to really get, get themselves situated. What is it they need in this different world of education that they'll be living? And what do they need to get going and how can we support them? So, and then we will have a day on social emotional health and wellbeing. And how do we help our, our students and ourselves? And also situat, police department will come in and give us sort of an overview of safety training, especially when it comes to COVID-19, the era of pandemic. So that's a brief overview.
That's fine. I appreciate that. I just wanted, I just wanted to reiterate the fact that staff are back in the buildings as of today. And it appears as if they're invigorated, I guess is the right word. They're really looking forward to this. So I appreciate all the focus that you put on them and making sure they have all the tools to be successful. Mr. Hayes?
Thank you, Peter. Two points, I guess. One is, you know, since day one, as we started talking about how to get kids educated again this year, I've shared with Janice's concerns regarding any stringency in any plan that we have. And like her, I, I had hoped and I know that our re-entry plan is based upon being able to change things on a daily basis, weekly basis, monthly basis as the, as the facts and the data comes in as we go forward. But I, and I agree with Janice that it's especially important that that be done for the next 16, 17 days, that, you know, as things go forward, other than, you know, what we're going to teach and exactly how we're going to teach, but how we're going to open is reviewed and discussed and decided upon each and every day. So I just wanted to share with Janice that longstanding concern. The other thing I wanted to say, and I wasn't sure when to say it tonight, but it came up, Bill, when you were discussing. And I think Jen, you were as well, some of the, the principal forums that we've been having. And I was out of town last week with not much to do. And I was able to watch all of the forums in full at least once. And I just wanted to say that how valuable those were to me, as I'm sure they were to the staff with the, the questions in the detail and the thought that the parents are giving, as well as the, the attitude of total collaboration by the principals with the parents. Again, there's a reason I think we have the best school system in the state. And, and I think that, you know, Ryan Yors, the Cushing one were just amazing. And it is the, the collaboration between the principals and the parents on these issues is a, is a big reason that we can be, we can brag about our school system. And so I want to thank all the principals on that.
Can I just say one thing in answer to the idea that you and Janice brought up, Michael, about being able to respond to and look at ourselves and determine how we can change and do things better? And I think the word we adopted at the beginning of the summer was flexibility. So we do need to be able to pivot quickly, but we also want to do it in, in a thoughtful way. But I absolutely agree with you that these 16 days, these next 10 professional development days are critical to get us on the right track. And our, our staff feels comfortable and is, and feels like they have people around them that care about them and are here to support them.
That's great.
Thank you.
I agree. Mike, thanks for the comments. I would agree. I think that the, I think it's nice that this, the committee as we, well, Mike, you were able to participate just out of interest, I presume. And all of us here in this room tonight all have children in the, in the system. So we were able to firsthand participate in these meetings. And I think it's nice to be able to see the work of the principals firsthand because it's not often that we're able to, to see that. So we thank the principals and all the staff for putting that together and being transparent and available and easing a lot of concerns. So thank you to all. And it is the summer, so thank you again for stepping up.
Yeah, I have, I do have children, but they have, it's their children who are in school right now. So I'm a typical grandfather and it's.
Can you guys hear Mike? We lost. All right. Mike, I lost the last words, but I can anticipate what they were. So thank you for the compliments. Any other comments, questions? Yes. Superintendent Burkhead?
Thank you, Chairman Gates. I just wanted to, you know, I think I want to, you know, kind of echo what Mr. Hayes has said about the principals' work behind the scenes, but also in their communication and transparency. I think that's a really strong theme that we want to emphasize. And I think what's all the best schools and the greatest schools have in common. I also want to kind of just give a sailor shout out, if I might, right now to kind of four unsung heroes that have been working all summer long, that have really helped me in my position. And I know I've helped Dr. Dutch and Dr. Boebert in their new roles. Cindy Seesaw, Andrea Cochrane, Marcia Allen and Kim Peters are administrative assistant staff in the central office. They worked throughout the whole summer. You ask for something, it's there, but a lot of these documents don't just appear out of thin air. They have to be retrieved, calls have to be made, follow-ups have to be made. And when things need to be punctual, like we make a deadline for Friday on Friday, it's there on Thursday for us. So I want to thank those four young ladies for all their hard work and effort and just to making the machine go and they're, they're working hard to make that happen. So just wanted to make sure that we're, that was put on notice. So thank you.
Great, thank you. Yeah, we know there's a lot of stuff that goes on behind the scenes and it's nice to recognize those that, that are involved. I know that I'm in the central office at least weekly, if not more. And throughout the summer, I've seen everyone hard at work. So we thank those folks as well. Any other comments or questions for Ms. Arnold? Seeing Ms. Brandt leading.
Just a quick comment before we move on. I think until we get the next update for the additional meet that's being added to the plans, just to reiterate that everyone should look at Thursday thoughts that went out from Bill this past week because it gives a lot of details to, at least initial details to how the days will be structured. So the orange hybrid and then the blue beacon fully remote, it does have, you know, what time does the day start? So things like that, that parents might have questions about that can be initially answered. And then, you know, obviously as the teachers do professional development these next two weeks, they put the magic into that plan. So we'll look forward to the next update on that. But at least we have, that is the initial structure. So it's something to get us to the next step. Thanks.
Thank you. And I would agree. I think as a committee, we have received significantly fewer emails with questions, comments and so on. So that's just tribute to the team that there are resources out there that help answer some of the, or a lot of these questions. I know that my email box continuously says it's almost full, but it's less full than it, than it has been. So I appreciate everyone utilizing the resources that are out there because they are there for a reason. Okay. Moving on the agenda, our subcommittee updates. Not quite sure who's handing, who's taking this and running with it. Mr. Burkhead?
Thank you, Chairman Gates. We gave you Bill last week and I'm going to give an executive summary on those. Ms. Arnold and I can answer any questions on those. The one we did hold off on was the, the face covering or the mask policy, which you have in your packets now. That may be one I want to discuss after you have any questions.
Yeah, so this, so this is the second reading for all, all of these policies with the exception of that face covering. So we'll just have to take them in order if there are any questions or comments on each of those. If not, I would entertain a motion. I guess just generally speaking, many of these are being updated as a result of the pandemic.
Yeah. Yeah, that's correct. And they are direct recommendations from the Mass Association of School Committees. So they're not documents that we just came up with. They were vetted by that association and also from our, our subcommittee, our policy subcommittee also vetted these documents and feel that they're in line with what's needed for our district and in line with what's needed for, these are especially kind of pushed out by the Mass Association of School Committees because of COVID and the situation of places. And also a few of them are in line with new policies regarding sexual harassment and Title IX that also came out this summer. So we're, we're comfortable that we're in line with all the new mandates and recommendations from the state.
Great. Let's go through the first one. Policy A, C, not discrimination. If there are no questions or comments, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Was that Mr. Hayes? Motion by Mr. Hayes.
Second.
Second by Ms. Brandalini. Roll call votes. Ms. Limbom?
Yes.
Ms. Brandalini?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Gates, yes. And Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to policy A, C, A, B harassment. Any questions or comments?
Just a question.
Sure.
Do we have a, I'm sure we do. Does the Title IX Coordinator for the district have to go through, they have to redo, go to new trainings for that, correct? And it's, I don't know, I'm just. So do we have a Title IX Coordinator for the district, and that person has to go to the trainings, and you have to list them on our website and everything? So we're doing all the dot in the i's, crossing the t's stuff?
Yes, we are. That's me.
Oh, you're, okay.
Ms. Arnold, do you want to take that one?
Gotcha.
So, yes, we are. I'm working with our attorneys to get a training for our administrators. So we have hoped to do it by now, but things, all being COVID and pandemic, we haven't yet, but we will in the coming weeks. And all of those names, so the Assistant Superintendent is the Title IX, the anti-harassment, the ADA compliance person for the district. Did that answer your question?
Yes, thanks.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Motion by Mr. Hayes. Second by Mr. Long. Roll call vote, Ms. Brandalini.
Yes.
Gates is yes. Long?
Yes.
Limbom?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to policy ACAB-R, grievance procedure for complaints of sexual harassment. Any questions or comments from the committee? Ms. Limbom?
section two in the last, part A in the last paragraph, I wonder if Ms. Arnold could explain the reason for, I think historically, from what I have been reading, students especially that have brought forward complaints of sexual harassment or been victims of sexual harassment feel that they have not been protected from the people or the student that had perpetrated that harassment. So I wonder if she could elaborate on that, the reason why students, the that the harassment, their complaint is brought against, have to be, remain in school in the same environment.
All right. So in schools, if there is a complaint about another student, the practice is to separate those students. You can go ahead and just remove a student based on an allegation, but an allegation gives, starts the investigation, a complaint or a formal allegation. And you would, principals will do everything to keep those students separate. But state law or federal law, FAP, you know, every child is, has access to free public education. And so we can't, we, both schools have, both students or all parties have a right to be in school until there's a conclusion of the investigation. So an allegation, I know parents get upset and teachers get upset, but it's sort of like that, that innocent to prove guilty, which we all say about in court.
Thank you.
Peter, could I do a follow-up to Janice's?
Yes, Mr. Hayes.
At least because of pandemic and the ability for virtual learning and the ability to, for a student to get a free and appropriate education outside of a school building, at least during these times, was there any discussion as to whether a principal could state that the accused is getting a free and appropriate education on par with anybody else in the school system from home, while the alleged victim could remain in school?
So if I understand the question correctly, Mr. Hayes, you're saying that if a student, if there's a target, an alleged aggressor, that that person be able to stay at home while the target is able to come into school, so that aggressor stays at home and learns remotely, and that target can be in school? Is that what I'm understanding you say?
Yes.
So we didn't have any discussion on that. I certainly can take that back to the attorneys if that's something you'd like me to do. My strong feeling is that that is kind of, I guess the school can do what they think is right, but my feeling is that that still isolates, you know, that's already sort of saying that one student, that student who is alleged to have done something is guilty, or we've already made the determination without the investigation. That's kind of the perspective I'm taking anyway.
And I think that's a good point. And I'm just curious, I mean, you know, you talked about state and federal law. I think it's the federal law, which has been recently changed.
Yes.
To give more rights to the accused. And I'm not, I have frankly, nothing against that, obviously, but it's just to me, I mean, when I was going over, that was an interesting point that occurred to me. And I don't know if it occurs or if it interests anybody else on the committee, but make a good point of regardless of whether it's remote or in-school learning, the accused has the potential to be picked out. But I guess at least when you're talking about young children rather than college students and that, in my opinion, the the psychic and emotional disruption upon an alleged accused is, an alleged victim, excuse me, is, might lead to some more discussion.
I might just add to that, Mr. Hayes. It does become a case-by-case situation as well. There is a clause in the last paragraph there under A that says, in addition to the above supportive measures, the district, in its discretion, may consider the emergency removal of a student in accordance with the ethical student discipline regulations. So in other words, if we have enough information or evidence that someone is a danger, you know, we don't have to wait for that trial necessarily to remove that person.
Right.
We have, for example, video footage of an assault, but it still hasn't gone through the court system, we have the right to remove that that student in that case. So I think maybe that might help clarify the situation a little bit better, you know, where we are, you know, we need to protect the civil rights of both complaint and an alleged, alleged victim and the alleged aggressor. But we also have to do our due diligence in keeping, our highest priority is keeping all students safe. So if we have enough evidence that indicates that there's a, someone's in danger, then we certainly can remove someone in that emergency setting under our discipline policies.
It's another good point, Bill. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Uveran Burkhead. That's an important feature that I'm not sure everyone was aware of in terms of the policy. I'm not sure that has been followed in the past, so it's good to know.
It hasn't. I can tell you, it hasn't.
Well, as a follow-up to.
Yes, follow-up, Ms. Limbom.
Well, I mean, one of the main questions, one of the main reasons I wanted to ask Jen to clarify that, that paragraph was because I don't want people who feel they're victims of sexual harassment or any kind of harassment to think that we're not supporting them. It's just that sometimes our hands are tied.
Right.
So.
That's an excellent point. I think that comes back to communication, I think the communication we're having tonight, communication that this exists. And then when you're dealing with this situation, hopefully we won't, but inevitably you do if you're around long enough. You communicate this with the alleged victim and what policies are in place. And there's still a lot of things we can do if our hands are tied to keep people safe. And I think that's our job, and that's what we'll do. So whether that alleged aggressor is in the building or not, well, our job is to make sure we communicate to the alleged victim that their, that their child, or in this case, the student themselves are safe. And so that's our, that's our role.
Great, thank you. I have, obviously, it's important, this is a very important topic. It always has been, and I think it's appropriate for us to be speaking about it now as we're beginning a new school year. I don't have a question or comment so much about the policy itself. I think that it reads fine and I'm okay with it. My, my question or reference to it is, how are students, two sides of it? Number one, do we have some sort of process in place that allows those that have been impacted by this to report? And do they know what those reporting steps are? Number one, and how is that communicated? And I guess also, for those students who potentially are offenders of this, do they know that this policy is in place? We have policies for lots of things, but I'm sure we don't review every single one. So I just want to kind of understand that. If Ms. Arnold, you're the appropriate person, I'm not really sure, but this is a, obviously, a really, really important issue that I want to make sure that students and staff, if they're impacted as well, know what the reporting requirements are, know what the impacts of their illegal behavior is.
So I, these, all of these things are in student handbooks, right? The processes, identification of targets or bullying, and, you know, the discipline that will follow. But I think you bring up a really good point, Peter. There is a lot of information in the handbook, and students are required to read it and then sign off that they have read it. But some, I feel like some of these issues that are in the handbook or policies might be more pertinent right now or need extra attention right now that we haven't given them in the past. And that, and since this policy is changing or is being revised, and the Title IX, there are new regulations around Title IX, that's been rewritten, that this would be a really good time to, to ask principals to focus on that, especially in the secondary levels.
I would agree. I think that that would be helpful. This is a, you know, I can't, important is not the right word. It's more than important, but I think that it is imperative that students are aware of these policies so that they understand the repercussions and that for those that I guess, recipients of this type of behavior, that they feel comfortable and have a path to report that. And that's for students as well as staff. I would think it'd be easier for staff to report, students obviously younger, but we just want to make sure they feel comfortable and are aware of that process.
And I think given everything we know about the past couple of years, I think that we can do a better job at that. And I think that these documents help, help guide us, this regulation document helps give us a real process that will guide us. And that, you know, this is important, and we want, or imperative, to use your word, and we want everybody in the school community to know the focus we're putting on it. And I think you bring up really good points, everyone.
Great. And I know we have a lot of information, you know, to go over at the beginning of the year, but I think that this is something that certainly should, in my opinion, maybe the committees as well, that we, that it should be highlighted.
Pete, I think that's, Peter, I think that's one of the, just a terrific comment and request. And Jen, I think you're right that it is something we can do and do better. And thank you, Pete, for bringing that that up, especially when you consider that you, regardless of whether it's, you know, things that we're focused on before, which are sexual harassment, gender,
Mike, we lost you.
Race inequity deficiencies more apparent and have our kids understand them better. But this is certainly one area of our existing policy that we can improve upon. And Peter suggesting that we have the principals reemphasize making all our kids, especially in the secondary, Nicole, more aware of the process of address is terrific. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other questions, comments from the committee?
I'll say I agree with everything everybody said, too, in that I think even if it's, you know, developmentally appropriately done at the elementary level, it's important to include that, too. Obviously, the points about secondary are well taken, too, but you can do that at a younger level, too.
I agree.
Might help us out in secondary someday.
Yes.
No, I agree. It goes K to 12.
Yep.
Okay. If there's no other comments, I know, Mike, you had some minimal reservations to approving it, but if I have, if there is a motion, I'm okay entertaining that.
And I'll make the motion if we're ready, everyone else is ready. You know, I think that this question was a good one, and will will eliminate any, any concerns I have at this point about it. And so I would make a motion to approve as presented.
Motion by Mr. Hayes.
A second.
Second by Ms. Limbom. Roll call vote, I'm going to go to my left, Long.
Yes.
Brandalini?
Yes.
Gates, yes. Limbom?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to policy EBC supplemental. Any comments or questions?
I had none.
That one's good. All right, this is easy one, I'll entertain a motion.
I will move that we, school committee, approve the amendments and the revisions to this policy as presented.
Motion by Mr. Hayes.
Second.
Second by Mr. Long. Roll call vote, Gates, yes. Limbom?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Brandalini?
Yes.
Long? Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Moving along, policy IHBHE, remote learning. Any comments or questions regarding that?
I have none, Pete.
Looked like there's none here either. I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that this policy be revised and amended or voted as presented.
Motion by Mr. Hayes.
Second.
Second by Mr. Long. Roll call vote, Brandalini?
Yes.
Limbom?
Yes.
Gates, yes.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Policy IHB-
Yes.
Limbalm.
Yes.
Gates, yes. Long.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Policy IHBHE dash E, remote learning. Any comments or questions?
None on my end, Pete.
Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I will move that we vote the policy as presented this evening.
Motion by Mr. Hayes.
Second.
Second by Mr. Long, Gates is yes. Limbalm.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
Branelini.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Before we go on, Pete, can I ask one quick question?
Yes.
So Superintendent Burkett, these will all be updated by tomorrow, at the end of this week on the school website?
Yes, Mr. Long.
Okay. Want to make sure.
Okay. Do you know his support, you know, his support staff that he was mentioning? He just made some work for that. You just made some work for them. All right. So this is policy EBCFA regarding face coverings. This is our first reading. I guess what I'd like to do is discuss this, have comments, and then if we're all in agreement, we can agree to vote it tonight. It is our first reading, but we kind of, we expected this. So if we feel comfortable, I would consider voting on this as well. If you have any comments or questions? I'm sure we do. Yes, Mr. Burkett will give an overview of this.
Okay, this one's on face coverings and like a lot of things with COVID, it's fluid, has been changing. We've been watching the recommendations from medical fields, and we've also been working with our board health director and school physician and medical, and our nurses and medical experts in the district. So the original document came from MASC. We looked at it with our policy committee, subcommittee, excuse me, and made the recommendations. There's one part on the document that I want to share with you, the quote, "Based on guidance from health authorities, neck gaiters, open shin triangle bandanas and face covering containing valves, mesh material or holes of any kind will not be considered appropriate masks." And there's a little nuance in the neck gaiters. There's this kind of competing, what's the best word? Medical evidence, if you will, there are certain neck gaiters that are appropriate and there are certain ones that are not. So I just wanted to clarify that, so maybe we might have to adjust this language or reconsider. And speaking with our, you know, because we've debated this back and forth and we've got some new information, so I'm going to take this directly from our school physician, Dr. Lane, who shared with me, as well as the, Mr. Shealy, the board health director, I conferred with him over the weekend. And they both agree that we look, use this most recent guidance is from the New England Journal of Medicine. And it talks about a recent study they did, and it talks about the most efficacious face masks, N95 surgical polypropylene and handmade cotton face masks all appear, appear efficacious for blocking respiratory droplets, while bandanas and fleeces seem to offer little protection, according to a study in Science Advances.
It's easier than going home.
N95 masks were, again, most efficacious, if I read that word correctly, followed by surgical masks, then propylene masks and handmade face coverings. Other masks, and this is, I'm kind of repeating myself, but they reiterated here, were less effective, efficacious, in particular gator type fleece covering seemed to spread larger respiratory droplets into numerous smaller droplets. Of these, the research writes, researchers write, considering that smaller particles are airborne longer than larger droplets, the use of such a mask might be counterproductive. So in effect, what it's saying, the fleece, the gator type fleece coverings are not effective. There are other type of gaiters out there that are not fleece that are, are effective. So I wanted to share that nuance with you for your discussion and consideration.
Can I ask one question while we review this? Can we share this policy so that people on, on the Zoom can see it? Yeah.
Can you share?
Can someone share it?
This is where I failed last time. Need it on a tab. You need it on a tab. So open up the comments, Ms. Limbalm. Yeah.
I got it. So I think, I can't even hear myself. The neck gaiters, I think I did read more information today that they're, like they're more effective if they're double layered, but I think if we just stick to one type of masks, then the teachers will have one last thing to do. They don't need to be policing, you know, kids to see if they're gaiters or the right gaiters. I would like to see language in the, in the policy that the type, because it just says it covers the nose and the fate and the mouth. And maybe if there was some language that, you know, said similar to like surgical mask. So it's, you know, because, you know, that could be, not, not that, I mean, we all know what the face of mask looks like, but if it was more focused, so maybe you could sit, you know, just, there wouldn't be any leeway.
Maybe we could just ask chin, has to include, add chin to nose, mouth and chin. That would make it simpler.
Any other comments? No, because I'm on it. Sorry. Mike.
I was just going to suggest to Janice's comments that perhaps just adding that the requirement that masks cover nose, mouth and add chin to the policy would eliminate a lot of problems as well. Just a suggestion.
Any other comments?
I'll make a comment. I'm confused about this, like most things COVID-19 related, because you can read, you could spend a few hours reading why we should never put the neck gaiters on, on our children, and then you can negate it the next few hours, other info. So I'm curious, as Mr. Burkett said, what the, what the doctors, our doctors are saying. Could you just reiterate that part again for us with, so there's new information? The fleeces are a definite no. I just, I, I know, like I see the gator, the stretchy gaiters on the kids at basketball and baseball and things, and they've got like the situant anchors and all that. You know, one, I would want them to be out in something unsafe. Two, like I don't want us purchasing school related things that are unsafe or through our sports organizations, but not that those are necessarily school based, but the teacher concern Janice brought up, I hear, you know, but I, and I also know that parents have bought things for students already, and some kids have some particulars about what they're, what feels comfortable to them and what is usable for them in school. So I, I feel really slightly torn on this policy.
And I guess one of the concerns I had is, I mean, do we want this policy to be so strict that we're starting to include very specific types of masks? Or do we want to just take it a step back and say, you know, we'll use the guidance based on health authorities, whether it's state, federal, the board of health, what I'm sorry, whoever we want to use in order to be able to make those decisions as we go and not necessarily bind the district to, you know, we're restricting something in a policy that you have to now enforce without us changing the policy later on. So at the end of the day, if we can, you know, keep taking a step up, obviously we don't want to allow face gaiters if they're not safe, but just keep the policy a little broader. And then as information gets updated, because I'm sure next week there will be a new update on face gaiters, you know, we're not hamstrung or constantly looking at this policy and revising it. And like Nicole said, impacting families who are buying masks on a regular basis.
Couple of comments I'll make first, Mike. So first of all, timing is important here. We have been meeting every week since June, I think, as a school committee. Next Monday is Labor Day. We were not planning on having a meeting. I would recommend we do not have a meeting next Monday. I think we all need a break and also it's not as if we just appear at these meetings. I know Superintendent Burkett and his leadership team are busy preparing for these meetings, so I would rather at least give one week off for that preparation. With that being said, this is a really important policy. I think it's kind of the, the crux of what we're dealing with. It's my opinion, I like Mike suggesting that we try to keep it broad so that we don't need to revise this every time new medical evidence comes out. I don't know how we can best do that. I think Superintendent Burkett, you mentioned that you're meeting with the, well, you met with the medical advisory team last Wednesday, or are you meeting with them this Wednesday? Both. I mean, does it make sense to have them visit this policy and make their recommendations in addition to what they've already done?
Well, I think they've already have. They've, they've already given their opinion on the, on the neck gaiters. And I think, you know, I would feel more comfortable having, not that we have to be super strict, but have a narrow focus of what's appropriate to wear on a mask and then revisit it later. You know, because I know a lot of the policies will probably change as COVID changes. But I think we would, are better to start off narrow, and if we need to expand it, we can. I mean, this is, you know, we're talking about a virus.
And I do think that we need to get the policy at least established initially to give some of these guidelines. I do, I do understand that if families need to purchase masks for their students or, or staff need to purchase them, perhaps they can just stick with what we know works and not potentially look at those gaiters for now. I'm assuming, I don't know how long these, these masks last, so we're probably going to be making multiple purchases throughout the year for their family, and I'm guessing. So again, in the interest of time, school does start two weeks from Wednesday. This policy also pertains to staff and they started today. So I think that it's, in the interest of time, I think that we do need to potentially move forward with a policy and potentially revise it. I think that Janice, your, I think it was Janice made comments, like it needs to be specific in the, or, or Mr. Hayes said that needs to cover your nose, mouth and chin or something like that, just so people don't really have a way around it. I agree with Ms. Limbalm. We don't want teachers having to enforce this more than they already will need to. And if we're making sure they have a face covering, now we don't want to be in the business of them determining whether or not it's appropriate. I don't think that that's necessarily their responsibility. So with that being said, I don't know how the rest of the committee feels. I think that we all understand this is important and we want to get it right, but I think we also need to get something, at least foundation set up now so that we can move forward. Again, our next meeting isn't until Monday, the 14th, which is two days before the first day students come back. I'm not sure what challenges that would create to our families.
I'm more, I'm more proposing that, you know, take that sentence based on the guidance from health authorities, central public schools will maintain a list of approved masks. And then, you know, we just have something on the, the website that says these are approved, these are not. And it's just, you know, we're constantly updating it under, either under the COVID or we're constantly telling, you know, it's right, it's right on every school website or it's right on the door. And every time there's a change, we send out an alert to families to know that this changed. Just give it, I, I agree with you, Janice, we want to be, you know, like neck gaiters should not be on there, you know, certain masks should not be on there, but at the end of the day, you know, we, the policy, I mean, at least it was always described to me, the policy should be, should be broad, the procedure should be strict. So if we keep the policy, just add, you know, something along the lines of what I just said, at least, you know, gives Superintendent Burkett and everyone else the ability to review these on a regular basis and just add face gaiters if at a later date they make sense. I'm making that up. Or, you know, add something new if a new type of mask comes out that, you know, is approved, that, you know, kids can start buying and, and bring it to school or, or staff or whoever. That was more the direction I was trying to go, but I agree with you. We, we want to make sure that we, you know, are safe with everything that we offer or allow families, students and staff to wear.
I think that makes sense. Mike, is it, is in reference to that sentence as a face covering that covers the nose? I'm sorry. Is there one particular reference that you would recommend? And then the question for Superintendent Burkett, is there particular medical group or board of health or whomever that we're relying on for this so that we would have the reference to that particular entity?
Can you hear me, Pete?
Mike, I can hear.
The desk thought I had all night was on mute, so I have witnesses here. And it was, of course, I'll blow it now, but Chairman Gates asked if, you know, what medical advisory groups are we using? And in the first paragraph, it does reference that we're using CDC, the Centers for Disease Control, DESI, the Department of Elementary, Secondary Education, and their medical, medical experts in the Mass Department of Public Health all issued these, these recommendations. So, you know, I think the issue at hand is that what, you know, Mr. Long referenced is that disinformation and science changes. Where neck gaiters, one research study a while back said neck gaiters are all bad. Now there's new research that's saying that some are, are good, but the fleece ones aren't. So I think that kind of is the challenge we face is if we, and also what Ms. Limbalm said is true as well, we have to consider also the fact that, you know, our administrators and our teachers on the front lines are kind of trying to navigate and make a call just by looking at a, a face covering, whether it's safe or not. And determining between multiple different types is going to be challenging. And I think that's the educators and my concern as well, is to be able to have a, a policy where we can enforce and that we know it's safe without having to get into, you know, the weeds too much. But so it is a quandary, like all the decisions we've made on COVID. I do, I, I think I agree with the recommendation from Mr. Long. Maybe we stay somewhat generic here and then when we have the changing evidence, we can update it as necessary. We can also reference something in our handbooks, which will reference this policy. And maybe we can look at making that a little more narrow and focused in the handbook.
Is, is there a, do you, do you anticipate that there is a, a link that would provide the recommendations based from these, from CDC and DESI? Like is there a, a link that provides that recommendation or is this a consolidation of those three different organizations? Meaning, I think what Mr. Long said, which makes a lot of sense, is we would say something like, you know, whatever per these, here's the link to provide their current recommendations. You know, I mean, like we'll, we'll be, we'll be able to find one, I guess, one website and one reference to what is allowed currently.
I don't think so, because as you saw, I, there's, there's studies being done every day. So I don't think they hang their hat on one set of, they made a set of recommendations here. I don't know if it's been updated. We can certainly check that. But whether it's a consolidation of this information, I think this was where the MASC took that all from those, from CDC, DESI and DPH and come up with this policy. And now we're seeing it's already kind of outdated a little bit. So they'd have to redo that. So there's not necessarily one link they go to. Because like the, the study I shared from Dr. Lane, that's the most recent one. So they wouldn't necessarily have it updated on CDC, DPH and DESI, especially because there's probably multiple studies going on right now. Especially because there's probably multiple studies going on right now.
So are you saying like have like a hyperlink in the policy to what we're discussing here? Put it in our like COVID page?
That's what I was thinking. I'm just not sure if it's possible. Similar to our handbooks that we use, I think we had a situation with sports and like per the Patriot League guidelines or whatever. There was a link to the Patriot League or to MIAA. I guess it was the MIAA. Theoretically. I just, I just want to be sure that if we reference these entities, that there is some output that they all recommend. I don't, I mean, just want to make it easy. I like Mr. Long's recommendation. I think it does really create policy rather than procedure, which is what we've discussed in the past. It's just, I want to make sure that there is a true output by these, conclusive output by these organizations that is easily found. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it's, it'll be conclusive today. You know?
Right.
But if we can put in a link maybe to what, what we're recommending are appropriate face coverings.
Mass Department of Public Health is our guidance. That's probably the most common sense one that would have the most update for Massachusetts. I'll make a link to their website or their, their most current research and have a list of appropriate masks. That's one way to do it. Kind of like get to the solution that you're talking about, Mr. Gates.
That's my comment. What do you guys think?
Well, I think maybe we could say tonight that, that it's very unlikely that we would be approving a policy that allows gators at this time. So at least that's out there. And then maybe with the edits approved on the 14th. If you think it's, there's too much, too many changes tonight.
We can also, we get the meeting Wednesday, we can make some recommendations to you this week. That gives you some time to look at. Or the, the, I don't want to give you guys another meeting, but we could zoom maybe after that meeting, the subcommittee can meet quickly to talk about the recommendations from the Wednesday meeting and kind of maybe so I can get more information on if we can have a link there to go to what, where are we getting our information and how timely is it? It might help guide your decision better if we have that information.
Mr. Hayes, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I had a couple and, and I guess the consensus is to move voting to the 14th and I like Janice's suggestion that we at least get it out there.
We lost you, Mike. Mike? We lost Mr. Hayes.
Yeah, I think he was just, you know. Agree with me.
He's always back. Mr. Hayes?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yep.
And that, that we include mouth, nose and chin. The other thing I was going to just say briefly is, and without trying to be political was I, I hope that as we get the final, as Dr. Burkhead, Burkhead intimated that Dr. Lane's research and sites could be some, something that we point to. As well as, because we've used it in other areas of the reopening plan, the American Association of Pediatrics, which is what, you know, we've been relying on pretty much as well from day one. I mean, it's just, and it's tragically becoming a daily fact that the CDC is becoming less of a trustworthy source on any matter concerning COVID. So I'd like to see more emphasis on Mass Department of Health, Pediatrics, New England Journal of Medical, the real, the real experts who unfortunately have to replace a politically compromised CDC.
Could we consider? Could we consider selling these gators? I'm sorry, these face coverings? They've been gifted to each one of the school committee members and they fit perfectly and they are show support for our district. So perhaps we can look into that.
So every kid will have the same mask.
Well, it would take, it would take issue of this policy out of question. I mean, everyone would adhere to our standard.
I don't know, Pete, I want mine.
We'll get you one, Mike.
No, no, just joking, but yeah, whatever. So are we going to go to the?
Oh, I lost you.
After tonight, sorry. So after tonight, though, the question's going to be, can they wear gators on the 16th? Right, so that's it. That's the question. They are expensive.
The gators are expensive? Well, they can wear them outside of school.
Right.
You know, just not in school.
Yeah, gators are a fashion trend.
Well, they're for skiing too. They work well when you ski.
Superintendent Burkhead, do we have a list of currently approved masks that people can wear inside the school district that we can at least put out on the website tonight or tomorrow? And just put at the bottom, this is subject to approval by the school committee for this policy?
Yes, I can do that.
And at least just streamline it and make it a little easier. I mean, if we have to meet at the end of this week, we have to meet at the end of this week, but you know, at least start getting it out there for families.
I mean, they do consistently seem to fall at the bottom of the list. When you're looking at what the best face covering to wear is.
In, in reference to gator?
Yes.
That's really what we're discussing.
You know, it's like, okay, it might be okay, but it's not great. And when you're coming into a building, we're trying to promote health and safety.
Right. So that's ultimately the crux of this. Does the policy allow for gators? And right now, and right now the guidance doesn't recommend it.
Right.
So I would say right now, no, you cannot wear gators.
Okay, that was what I was.
That's my understanding and I am not a doctor.
But we're following advice from those that are.
Right. And we, we understand that gators look probably cooler than these face coverings, but it's not about the way you look, it's about safety. I think the colors are great. I love them. Thank you. All right, so do we have a motion at this point?
Would the motion be to table the, this policy?
We don't even need to, Mike, because this is technically the first.
That's right, it's the first reading.
I guess we will have to either schedule another meeting, which I was really hoping not to, or or just do it on the 14th. Is that okay? Do you think that will work? Superintendent Burkhead, I think the 14th would be okay to, to vote on this?
I do.
Yeah, it would be if, I guess, I'd need some direction on the neck gators. I think you've been, you know, I think like Mr. Long said, if, if I put out the documentation that I'm aware of now, it would say fleece neck gators are not appropriate. However, some double layered types of padded neck gators are, I don't know the terminology, but I know there's some that are acceptable. So we're kind of getting into what it hears. And if I do that and then we devote not to have neck gators, then people go and buy them. That's not my only concern, so.
Perhaps.
It would help. I would like some guidance on where that's going.
Perhaps.
We could put that on teachers to flip somebody's neck gator over and double check that it's triple layered.
I, I don't. Yeah. You know, anything that is similar to a surgical face mask, you know, we all know what those look like.
Yeah. That's what it is.
Pete?
Yes, Mr. Hayes.
Perhaps we could say that gators would only permit, be permitted if multi-layered with cotton. Or just whatever's easier, just dump, you know, 86 them.
The problem, Mike, is that we don't want the teachers having to check everybody's face mask.
No, that's, yeah, so that's why I guess I would prefer just to 86 the gators.
Sorry, yes, I would agree. So if that's the case, the policy is pretty much complete with the exception of potentially updating it to the current guidance of appropriate face coverings, right?
Well, I'd like to know what the committee feels about including the requirement that the masks cover the nose, mouth and face and chin. And I'll tell you why. I mean, I've known two physical altercations in situat, one in capacity, one in whole that really deteriorated over the interpretation of, you know, wise guys saying, well, I have it on my mouth and my chin, but I'm not going to use it on my nose. Or I have it on my nose and my, and, but forget about my mouth and it would.
We lost you, Mike. So how does a committee feel about moving forward? What would you like to do?
To be public health lawyers or constitutional lawyers and those types of things. So to me, it would just make things less of an issue for teachers to try and to, to monitor.
I think we're all in agreement with that, Mike, that we don't want the teachers to monitor the appropriateness of the face covering. Obviously, I think in most cases it can be pretty easy to identify. There's going to be a few cases here and there that may not be aware of the policy, but we don't want them to be policing that. So with that being said, I mean, I, I think that the current policy is fairly fairly identifies what we're looking towards with the exception of potentially a link to, you know, as, as Mr. Long said, the guidance could change and it may add gators or take away something else. And if that were the case, we would need to revise our policy. So if we, if we somehow can just reference these organizations and whatever the appropriate link or otherwise reference to their recommendations, it would get us out of the business of revising this policy every couple of weeks potentially.
I'd even be fine keeping that third sentence and just adding in Central Public School, I'm sorry, that third paragraph, you said something that says Central Public Schools will maintain a list of appropriate masks. And we just, you know, if we need to take one of these and add it to the list, then we review and approve the new procedure or policy. And if we're not, then we're at least, you know, we're eliminating these three, four types. But then we still have a list of this is what's appropriate and what isn't. Because I doubt face gators is going to turn around and be something that is, you know, added to the list at any time in the near future. But if it is, then we review the policy and determine if we want to allow face gators anyways. I mean, I'm fine doing something like that. I just, I don't want to restrict the district. It's my only concern. So if we're do something like that, I'd be fine. If we don't, I'd be fine as well, but that's, that's just my concern.
I think my case is right. We should add that it covers the nose, the mouth and the chin. Well, yeah, because some people, yeah.
Some people I've seen have their masks pulled up so that it ends between their nose and their upper lip. And, you know, people, you see everything out there.
All right, so I don't know, quite sure where that leaves us, but.
Well, if I, if I may, Pete, and I guess I'm, I'm trying to hear what everyone's saying is that what I'd like to do is make an amendment to the policy to include nose, mouth and face and then approve as amended.
Nose, mouth and face or nose, mouth and chin?
Excuse me, chin.
Is that okay? You guys want? So I guess that's, is that a motion, Mr. Hayes?
I would make that a motion to amend, yeah.
So there's one other thing that I wanted to bring up that came up last week. Janice, you got it under the top of the second page? Yeah, so it came up in one of the meetings last week in that first paragraph, which says staff members are responsible for providing their own face coverage. I know that was a concern, especially whereas, you know, we've, we've talked about providing a lot of PPE for our, our staff for coming back. So I know one thing that came up was possibly striking this sentence or modifying it so that it was, you know, it matched the any agreements that we have with our staff.
So Bill, well, what is, what is the expectation of the staff? Like they can bring in their own face cover, like their own mask if they prefer. But I know there'll be masks at the schools.
Right, so it's, it's the same for students and for staff. They may bring their own, but we will have masks to offer them if they so choose. So it's an option.
What, so should the word responsible be changed then? I, I think the confusion was, you know, we're not going to provide anything for staff at all. So just relaxing, even, you know, if we relax the wording, I think that would solve the issue, but I just want to make sure that it's not looking like from a policy perspective, which is requiring staff to bring in their own, but we'll provide something if people forget.
Yes, I agree with that.
Right. Because what did we talk about two meetings ago?
Expected? I wonder, is that still along those lines?
Yeah, it's either can or may and just replace are responsible with one of those words. I would say may.
Peter, since we're talking about this so thoroughly, I wouldn't mind taking a breath and not voting it tonight, but do we want to wait so close to school opening? I know, meeting wise?
I don't know. I think, I think that's the concern. Again, I think ultimately the issue are, are gators allowed or not? And I think that we're realizing that they're not. I think it makes sense to get the word out there that as of now, neck gators are not. Does that mean we need to vote the policy?
I think so.
Yeah. Labor Day, like that Wednesday or Thursday after?
You can.
Pete, may I be heard?
Yes, Mike.
Well, I, I go, I'm going back in a little bit, but each, what each time, but I, I, I think it's important that we get a policy in place tonight. And so that's one thing and the, the, what Mike has talked about, I'm a hundred percent in favor of. And, and again, I would like to make a motion to include what he said as well as including the nose, mouth and chin. And the reason I think it's important tonight is I had to go to Target, Target to get some things I needed after I returned from out of town and people are out there shopping. There's not much left and I, I think it's important that parents know what we expect and what, where our policy is going to be to get, so that everybody has the chance to, to get what they need. Number one, and number two, it, also, I think two meetings ago, Dr. Dutch, when going through the inventory of what we have in place, if, if I'm not mistaken, was it 30,000 masks currently? For people who forget or don't comply.
Hayes, there, we, we did purchase a lot of masks and we've just placed another order in anticipation that this is.
in anticipation that this is not going to stop in the next few months.
Right. Thank you. So my own preference would be to vote this tonight. That's what I, that's my comment. Pete?
Okay. I just, I want to revisit that sentence about staff members. Not sure if this is bargaining or not. I'm not sure if it falls under that jurisdiction. And where it says staff members are responsible, I'm not sure if that was bargained. And again, I don't want to cross any bounds here, but perhaps it's kind of more neutral, where it's recommended that staff members provide their own face coverings? I don't know. I don't know how to do that. I don't, I'm not really sure which direction.
Well, it's difficult to envision any change in working conditions, negotiation that would be contrary to Situate Public Schools' policy. And I hear you, where you, you and Mike as well, you know, don't want to create an issue with, with the teachers. But perhaps we could say that staff, you know, staff members will provide, be provided with permitted face coverings if they do not come to school with one, something similar to that, just so that everybody's aware that everybody's wearing a mask, and it has to be an approved mask. So I don't know. But I hear your point, Pete, about making sure that everything is agreed upon at the negotiating table. So again, maybe I'll just flip back to let's wait till the 14th, but whatever you four want to do, I mean, I'm ready either way.
No, Mike, I think it comes down to the primary, we all agree, it comes down to are gators allowed or not? As of now, it's no, no matter, no. And then the second thing is this sentence regarding staff members. If there's an acceptable way to let the community aware that gators as of now are not being approved without voting this policy, I would be okay with that. It's not sure how we can do that. In regards to this particular, regarding staff members, I would defer to Superintendent Burkett or Dr. Dutch to get their comments again. And there's no implied bargaining going on. We're just curious as to the process. And if it does cross those lines, we can table it.
Dr. Dutch? Yes. So this, this is not an issue of bargaining. We're not requiring staff to bring their own masks. And it's easy enough to wordsmith that sentence to say that staff members may bring their own face coverings. However, if they prefer to use school-supplied face coverings, they will be provided. We're not putting a limitation on the number, as they're needed. Again, the focus is on safety. You know, so we, the other options, you can simply strike that and make it a, an assumption that we're providing, providing them all, you know, we're providing face coverings as needed. Either way, however you want to put that into the language. As far as gators and communicating, I think if you defer your decision on the policy, the district can still put out through, through an email or a peach jar notice, a list of currently approved face coverings that you can modify down the road as you get more guidance and as the, as the policy is finalized. It's not a permanent decision. It's as it exists currently.
Seems like a reasonable solution at this time. Again, I'm not looking to delay this. And obviously, the regulations could theoretically change, but I also don't want to rush into this. Again, as I said at the beginning of this, this is our first time through the policy. Usually, we, we have a second reading before we vote on it. I'm sure the comments are going to be exactly the same when we vote on this, as they are right now. I don't know if there'll be any additional information that'll be available to us. If Superintendent Burkett and Dr. Dutch are okay in communicating this, potentially in the Thursday thoughts, maybe, that says the district is in, you know, in process of finalizing or voting this policy as of this current time, you know, gators are not available? I'm not sure. I don't want to put any additional burden on anyone. But again, that's what this policy is coming down to, is gators or not. And as long as it can be communicated legally and whatnot, prior to a vote, I'm okay with that. I just don't want to drag this on longer than it needs to either.
I don't either. I mean, it's the policy on policies that we have to read twice, at least twice.
And Pete?
I guess my, my two cents on it would be that if we were to play that out and put a document out there of the currently approved masks, there are certain gators that are approved, and there are certain that are not. So it goes back to that circle we're in there. If you go and vote this and keep the gators in there now, then we've told people that certain gators are appropriate. And then next week, we vote, or two days before school, we vote no gators, we've got to...
Well, I think, but I think we're voting that, yeah, some gators may be appropriate and approved out in public, but in Situate Public Schools, in the classroom, gators are not allowed.
Right. So, but if you wait to do that, and we send out a document that shows all the approved ones, that's my, this might be confusion there, because like you said, there's some that are technically approved for outside, but if I were to list all that were approved, then they would be on that list. It might send a mixed message, that's all.
Pete, may I have your one more time?
Sorry, Mr. Long, Mike Hayes, first Mike Long, and then I'll call on you.
Yeah, the only point that I had about a list of set, sorry, masks would be Situate specific and not necessarily nationwide, or, you know, something done by the CDC or border health. So I mean, that approved list, I would expect gators to just not be there. And not necessarily say, you know, here's what's approved in the world, or Massachusetts, just here's what's approved at Situate, and strictly us, not, you know, the CDC or whatever group we're following. Sorry, Mike.
No, no, no. I want to hear what you have to say before what I have to say. And again, I go back to having what we are, what our policy is going to be, be voted and in place as soon as possible. And, you know, we've had three, a good discussion and with two, two or three real good, in my opinion, suggestions that I think we could easily vote this tonight with an amendment. And I'll say also is that as far as, you know, banning gators now is fine, how, fine with me. But I would also assume that any emergency changes to our policy that cannot be discussed and revoted quickly at a, at a school committee meeting can be handled by the superintendent on an emergency basis. And again, that being the case, and then I'm going to shut up. My recommendation and my, and I would make a motion that the paragraph regarding the face masks include that it covered the nose, mouth, and chin, that we keep that gators are prohibited in Situate, and that on the second page, we just state that staff members may provide their own face coverings. And that's the end of it. And then the rest of the, that first paragraph doesn't need to be changed, in my opinion. And then we're done with it.
I'll second that.
Wait, who was taking notes on that?
That's Genie's job.
I mean, it's pretty simple.
All right. I do have a question for Mr. Burkett, maybe. Has the MIAA given direction on this? I don't know if we, like, if sports are allowing gators theoretically, and the district is not, or if it differentiates being on the field. Again, I'm not trying to complicate this at all. I would like to wrap this up as soon as possible, because again, it's come out of gators, yes or no. And I know the MIA is a different organization. And I know that sports, in most cases, are outside, at least in the fall. Again, I don't necessarily need an answer, but just, just something to consider if we're, if we're in conflict with them.
I have the same question, too, because the policy does read pretty specifically in building, building principle.
Right.
Just, it's very specific to being on property in the building when you walk in, when you arrive at a building. So if you're out at a soccer, well, water, they can even be allowed to play, if you're out at a, whatever you can go out to with your team, and you're playing another team that's wearing gators. So yeah, same question, MIAA and, and all of that.
Yeah. So this, I mean, Mike's motion is still, Mr. Hayes' motion is still on the table. I'm, I'm fine with that. We have a second by Mr. Long. Again, I don't think we need to necessarily delay this. We're all trying to do the right thing. None of us are doctors. We just want to make this as easy as possible for now, for families, and for going forward. Again, I think Mr. Long brought up a really important point is as guidance changes, we don't have to revisit this policy, especially, you know, hopefully at some point, we're going to get back to our twice-a-month meetings, and we don't have to call a special one just to update this policy. So whatever that language is that allows for that, I think is, is very helpful. And I think for the most part, families are going to understand what the requirements are. There'll be certain situations where people probably ask if they can wear the gators. And unfortunately, as of this time, it appears if they're not allowed. So I still have the motion on the table with the sec, motion by Mr. Hayes, second by Mr. Long. Any further discussion?
Yeah. So to the sports, to the part that Janice just brought back up, the second set of bullets, it says additionally, face masks will not be required when appropriate social distancing, well, social distancing. And we could add a bullet below while outside that includes, you know, outdoor athletic events, or something along those lines.
Maybe, does, Mr. Ambriano, would he?
Yeah.
In school?
It is. So that's why, that's why instead of just using when outside, we just add a, an additional bullet, or we just add a sentence regarding, you know, outdoor, approved outdoor activities, or outdoor school activities, whatever. And that would just cover sports. Again, keep it broad and simple and, you know, let the athletic department deal with sports.
Do we know what motion is on the table?
Well, there's three things on the, on the table. Nose, mouth, chin, gators prohibited, and first paragraph, page two, professional staff may provide their own covering.
Is that the motion that you've seconded, Mr. Long?
And now add the bullet about sports.
Yeah.
So we got four little cap, little changes.
Could we just say on number four, while outside, and then in parentheses, say, including outdoor sporting events? Something like that?
Well, we don't want to impact what the MIAA regulations are. I think they are going to be wearing some sort of face coverings. And again, that's where gators may be allowed. So I don't know if we want to add language about that, because it might contradict what the guidance is.
Right. And again, MIAA will be mostly recommendations only, and I would think that Peter and his other athletic directors within the leagues that we're going to play will review those and come up with their, their league policy. But...
All right. I don't think we necessarily need to add any additional language to that bullet.
I agree with you, Pete.
Okay.
Anyway.
All right. So we have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion? I guess we're ready to vote then. I'll start to my right, Ms. Limblon.
Yes.
Ms. Brinalini?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Gates, yes. Hayes?
Yes.
All right.
Everybody's back.
The face coverings policy, EBCFA, passes unanimously, as amended and approved. Mr. Burkett, do you have all that?
I do.
Great. All right. We lost about 15% of our participants throughout that discussion. Yeah, thanks to those that have stayed. This is, this is the type of discussion that are at most of our meetings. So can see this. All right. Moving on the agenda, this is our second and final place for public comment. If you have a question, please raise your hand using the mode of comment below. Whoa. Okay. Ms. O'Neill?
Hey, Peter, I have a question about the vote you just took on face masks being required to cover your chin. Some people have varying-sized heads, and the face masks that securely cover their nose and mouth don't go all the way down to cover below their chin. Are we going to be harkening back to my parochial school days, where if the skirt doesn't cover to a certain point, you'll be sent home? Or are we going to be okay if the mask is securely covering a student's face, I mean, their nose and their mouth, and covers partial chin? Because I'm really concerned that you've now added that to the language. And I am also concerned about how you're stating that families are required to buy masks, but now you're determining what type they have to buy. So those are my two questions. I don't know if you can answer them now, or if you can take them under advisement, but thank you.
Under advisement. Do you have a picture of a mask that may not go to the chin? Just curious what it may look like.
So my children wear children-size masks because it covers them more securely over their mouth and their nose, and it fits better around their ears. But it doesn't go all the way down below their chin. It just goes just below their mouth. So my concern is, I'm now going to have to go purchase new masks for my son who will be attending Situate Public Schools. That's something I can do, but there are others in the community that have probably made purchases because masks were hard to get at one point, and they were probably, you know, once they were available, started purchasing them. And it's a comfort thing for some children to wear something comfortable all day long, that they're going to, you know. So again, I just want to know, how is this policy going to be enforced if it doesn't, you know, if one student's mask doesn't go all the way down below their chin, or if it, you know, if they're wearing something that is fitting properly around their nose and mouth per the Mass Department of Public Health and the CDC, but now the Situate Public Schools have said it has to cover their chin as well? Those are just my questions. But I will, I will try to find a picture. I believe I sent you a picture of what my son's first day of school mask will look like. But I don't have one of what, I mean, I'll try to find a picture of my children wearing a mask that doesn't go below their chin, but I'll send that to you as well. So those are my questions, because I'm sure my children are not the only ones that have a head shape that maybe doesn't, you know, weren't wearing an adult-size mask, but the children's fit them better, but it doesn't go below their chin. So.
Okay. We'll take that under advisement.
Thank you. And I think you need to rethink gators, too, but that's a story for another day, and I will send you that all in an email.
I'll look forward to it. Thank you. Next up, Cheryl Rydel. Next up, Cheryl Rydell. Ms. Rydell? I have to ask to unmute.
There you go. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, Cheryl Rydell from with kids in Citro High School, Gates and Wampatuck. So tonight I've heard a lot people referring to how they really want to do what's best for everyone, which I found really surprising because all of you are in a closed classroom without a mask. And we read through the policy tonight that states that everybody in the school district or in the public building needs to be wearing a mask. And my understanding is that the teachers will be in the building tomorrow. And a prolonged exposure in a classroom is a possibility for infection. So I really wish that you guys would have worn masks today, because I think that it sends a mixed message. That's all.
Thank you. We made a statement at the beginning of the meeting that stated we were more than six feet away, and as a result, we're not necessarily required to wear a mask, but we understand your your comment, and we will take it under advisement.
Your your own policy states that in the school building, everybody will be required to wear a mask regardless of social distancing. The CDC still recommends that if you're not standing next to a family member in a public building, that you wear a mask. So I understand that you guys feel comfortable, that you felt comfortable doing that, but if I were in the room and I have a child at home that is medically complex, then my wearing a mask would not overcome your not wearing a mask if you guys were infectious. And I understand that the infection rate is low, but I I, you know, I just think it's something to think about. Because we have a lot of parents who are not comfortable sending their kids in masks. And now we have an example in the school building where people are not wearing masks.
Thank you. Mark Bissel.
Hi, good evening. First of all, thanks for all the work that everyone's put in, trying to keep up with all of it. As a parent, it's a lot. I can only imagine how many hours it is for you all to put it together. So thank you for all that and the opportunity to discuss it. I want to actually jump back to the earlier presentation on the curriculum or the the approach for today. In the earlier versions of the plan, the middle and high school, it looked like there'd be an instruction every day whether students were in the building or were going to be remote. And it's wanted to speak a little bit to the thinking to move to the just the 10 minute check in per class per cohort if they're remote as opposed to having entirety of class broadcast on Zoom. I realize we never said it would be fully broadcast all the time, but I assumed that a good chunk of the day when my kids are at home would be broadcast for the middle of high school. And I see 10 minutes a day now. So can you give us a little clarity on that decision, please?
So I can answer that, and I have department chairs here too that could help if they'd like. On, it's really hard for a teacher to be teaching students in front of them and also teach remotely effectively. It's you have you have students in front of you, and then you're also trying to teach students in another place entirely. It's very difficult to do that. It's essentially you're teaching two cohorts at once, which you really are. It's just focus, you wouldn't give enough focus or do it well for either cohort were you to do all of them at once. So if the students are remote, we want to check in with them every day, but more of their work will be asynchronous. It'll be completing projects, but they will check in with their teacher. Like when they do that connect 10, they can also have the opportunity to ask questions about assignments. And the teacher will go over the lesson for the day or or the lesson expectations, the lesson objective, and students can ask questions. But we're, at this point in time, we're not doing any sort of live streaming of instruction.
Thank you, Ms. Arnold. Mr. Bissel, did we get his? His address or his student? Genie, sorry. If Mr. Bissel, if you could just raise your hand again, I just need to know your either family affiliation or your, there you go. I'm going to ask you to unmute.
I have children at Gates and the high school.
Okay, thank you very much. Sorry for that.
Problem. Thanks.
Next up, Melena Davidova.
Yes, hi. I have a middle schooler and a high schooler, and we are part of the remote families. I just had a couple of questions regarding that. How are absences going to be notated, like in case of a dental visit or whatever, and it's during those connect 10 period? Is it normal procedure, like calling in or emailing the school to tell them that there is an absence related to a medical visit? Or how does that work for remote families? And I have another question too. So once that's answered, please.
Okay, I just wanted to remind everyone of the public comment section. It's not a Q and A. These are questions that you may be able to ask your building principal. They would have answers to you right away. In some cases, we can't ask, answer them efficiently here, but this is more of a public comment according to the policy that we just restated.
Okay, so I will frame it in a comment. I hope that there will be in the policy for families information about absences where remote children are concerned.
Thank you.
And my other comment was would, how to frame it? I know that the Gates School has been very kind in scheduling a question and answer period for remote families this coming Wednesday. I have written to the principal, Dr. McGuire for the high school, and I have not heard anything. So I'm just wondering if there's consideration for a similar type meeting for the remote families for the high school.
That is under advisement and with the high school too. I believe there is a high school Zoom opportunity on Wednesday night.
That, but that would be at the same time as the Gates one. So that would be a problem with families who have simultaneous kids.
We need to figure that out.
I would just recommend that you reach out to the principal if you are not able to make one meeting. I think sometimes they record those meetings. That's something we can find out for you so that you can make one and watch the recording of another if that's easier for you. It's a good point you make about scheduling at the same time. Makes it a little challenging for you to make both.
Yeah, it would be great to be able to ask those questions, especially as Miss McGuire or Dr. McGuire has had trouble getting back to me for my questions, so.
I'm sorry, I can't take that comment. The policy states we can't talk about individual school administrators in a negative way. Sorry.
I'm not talking negatively, but thank you. Okay, bye bye.
Thank you. Yes.
I just want to clarify for the community. The meeting is a combined meeting of Gates and high school administrators and parents. So that both administrators will be there so that it's not different meetings at the same time. It's a meeting of both, for both. So there's one meeting at 6 o'clock with the administrators from the middle school and the high school present, so that everyone can get their answers. Their questions answered. So I just want to clarify.
Thank you. Okay, I have Mary Kay Corcoran.
Hello?
Yes.
Okay, so I have two comments. The first one is about
I'm sorry, just your name and your either address or your student's.
Chris Corcoran, 46, Cornet Stetson Road. I'm Mary Kay's husband.
Okay, your name.
Chris Corcoran, 46, Cornet Stetson Road.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I have two comments. The first one is my understanding is that if there is a case in any one of our schools, that it will not be reported to the general public, whether or not someone tests positive or not. And that seems like it's going to be very difficult for parents to determine on an ongoing basis whether the high is working or whether it's time to pull their child out of hybrid and go full remote. It it seems like clearly no one wants to know the name of a person that comes down with it, but simple indication of like, we had one, we had one person test positive in, you know, Gates Middle School last week. That's really only information that people need. It's my first comment. The second comment is the connect 10. I believe it was just stated, and I'll quote, there will be no live streaming of instruction. That seems pretty inequitable for people that choose full remote. And honestly, it seems pretty unfair. My last comment about that is, will there be any different type of of grading structures for fully remote people? Thank you.
I'll hand over Mr. Burkhead on the reporting requirements of any positive cases.
Sure. Thank you, Chairman Gates. Yeah, is it, you know, it's an excellent question, and people are curious to know that information. I think, you know, rumors may start and that type of thing. So we're meeting with our medical advisory team this Wednesday, and that's one of the agenda items is to discuss how we can best notify the public, maybe in a general sense, that there was, you know, one case in the district this week or something like that without violating an individual's HIPAA law. You know, I think in the example the gentleman gave, if we, if there was one case at Gates, and we said there was, you know, one case at Gates, you could probably narrow down who that person is. That would be a little, you know, we'd have to be careful of that. But I think there is a way to notify the public, because I think it's it is a good point, without violating someone's personal HIPAA laws. So we'll look to balance that and come up with some way of communicating that because we are, you know, I do strongly believe in communicating to the community. So, you know, it defeats the rumor mill. So it's in our best interest to do that as well.
Thank you. Ms. Arnold, would you care to comment on the on the grading and or the connect 10 option?
Sure, the connect 10 option, I'm sorry, I forget the question. There was about live streaming, right?
Yeah, yep.
That was the question. So, I mean, right now, we have no plans to livestream. If a teacher, teachers in a small group and decides to livestream themselves instructing, that's a possibility, but we also have to consider privacy of those students attending. So that's another reason why we can't livestream instruction during instruction when we have kids in school.
And I think the last comment was around grading or is grading going to be same for remote only versus hybrid?
And it's going to be the same across all cohorts.
Great, thank you. Greg Riney.
Thank you, Mr. Gates. Just want to express my my gratitude for the reports that were shared throughout the community and with the teachers over the past week. Superintendent Burkhead, Dr. Dutch, Mr. Dillon, did a great job, and it provided the assurance and peace of mind so teachers could focus on teaching and learning today versus safety. So just want to express our sincere gratitude for that because it allows us to focus on our core, our core job, which is teaching and learning a kid. So thank you very much. Even had a teacher say today, events working in their room that hadn't worked in a series of years. So and the ongoing commitment that has also been mentioned into the future as well for, you know, the ongoing upkeep and maintenance. So it's truly appreciated and puts teachers' minds in the right mindset to focus on success and the strong part of the reopening plan. So thank you very much.
Great, Greg. We we know who you are, but can you just state your your role?
Yeah, Greg Riney, Citro Public Schools Educator, Department Chair, Union Vice President. So.
Great. Thank you just for the minutes. Thank you.
Yeah, you got it. Thanks.
I see no other questions. So with that, I'm going to wrap up the second and final public comment. Thank you all for your participation. And sorry again to, you know, just revisit our policies, but we just needed to keep our meetings efficient and and effective. Moving forward in the agenda, correspondence, we have no correspondence. Ah, warrants. Dr. Dutch.
Well, again.
Hello.
So the warrant number S200827, the amount of $499,094.19 was signed by school committee member Lindblom. I'll focus on the large items again with explanations. We had in revolving accounts, non-resident tuition reimbursement of $14,240 for an exchange student from China who will not be joining us this year. From transportation revolving, $16,285 refunded to students not taking the bus this year. Out of our LEA funds, we had $9,241.25, which was for insurance and MIAA dues. Private school tuition in the amount of $28,210.40. Central administration apply supplies in the amount of $35,377.57 for primarily COVID related expenses. Disinfecting wipes, masks, the signs that you see around school indicating that folks need to wear masks and maintain social distancing. Contract services heat, $23,891.12 to commercial boiler systems for the Hatherley School. That also should be, is a COVID expense and should be reimbursable. Teacher tuition reimbursement, $37,042.40 for FY20 teacher reimbursements for courses that they took. Contracted services, the copier, $7,445.90. That's our monthly lease expense. Custodial supplies and contracted services, $21,268.90 from a variety of vendors, mostly for hand sanitizer and air purifiers, again, COVID expenses. And then IT contracted services in the amount of $291,622.86 for laptops, Chromebooks, and Ruckus, which is our Wi-Fi provider as far as the hardware. And that's that's it. So I'd certainly answer any questions with the chair if there are any.
That's exciting stuff. And I know that Superintendent Burkhead, I think he was in his, I don't know, weekly, weekly meeting today with this chair, I'm sorry, with the Sleckman, or it was previously in this meeting that we've already received $130,000,000 for reimbursement. Will you, will you be able to provide those dollars, whether the reimbursements as they continue?
Yes.
We'd like to hear about money coming in, not just money going out.
Yes, every every time we get significant reimbursement, I will keep you posted. If there are any items that are denied, I'll also make you aware of those because they'll be coming out of the budget. They're not anticipated to be paid for out of the budget. So I want to make sure you're aware of that.
Great, that's much appreciated. Again, we all, we always just sign these warrants. It's just money going out, but it's nice when we get it, get the reverse.
Well, hopefully we can create some revenue producing programs and generate some revenue as well.
Okay, any questions by the committee?
No.
Seeing none. Thank you very much for that report. It's, it is exciting stuff. Any other business?
I had two things I'd like to just bring up.
Okay.
The first is, again, going through the MTA checklist on buildings and and then the, as far as how we're going to reopen schools and special procedures for different course groups that I read, I was, and as usual, I'm especially groups that I read, I was, as usual, I'm especially interested in arts program, whether it's chorus band, performing arts, general art classes. And I went through it and going through the things that we're going to do as far as how to get chorus going, how to get band going, how to get art going, how to get all these things going. A lot of it is seasonal in nature, the recommendations that we're, that we're going through. What concerned me, and again, knowing that basically anything could change tomorrow or in a month, is that the policy that we, and the met, one of the metrics that we're using for those are DESI suggestions and recommendations. And what concerns me about that is that DESI has no scientific evidence or, or backup for any of their recommendations for those programs. And I especially remind everybody that, you know, we all received an email, I think this week or last week, from a woman who addressed this issue and says that professional chorus band, art, whatever programs, and college programs have commissioned and do have reputable studies on these issues that I think as we go forward in the next month or two, that those need to be looked at rather than just DESI's proclamation. Because right now, it concerns me that the guidelines, our guidelines state that as of the most recent vote, there are no, does not look like there are many ways for those programs to go forward in the winter. So obviously, that's a huge concern of mine. And the, so, you know, just kind of a heads up from me that I'm looking, I'm looking at that and keeping my eye on those things because I think it's imperative to keep those programs going, whether they're outdoors or indoors. And there is, there is scientific evidence now available that we probably, I didn't know existed. And so I would hope as we're going forward that that the task force and the reopening plan, task force would, would take those types of things into account. The second item was in the same report that it is going to be a big consideration whether and with funds available to transform hand drying into air blowers. This was a huge discussion when we built Gates School. I was on that building committee and the public building committee on both, on that building. That was a big topic of conversation and for a variety of reasons, including equality between with handicapped students, safety for all students regarding wet floors and many other items. We, we decided to have paper pan dryers in all, in the entire Gate School. And I think Janice has brought up in the past a very cogent addition to what our decision was based upon at that time, which is you turn on those hand blowers and who knows what the heck is blowing around the bathroom and where it's going to land and who's going to touch it. So I would hope that that, or that consideration would be given some more thought and, and rethink that if everybody thinks it's proper to rethink that. So those are, those are the two thirds from, from that, two comments from that. The third comment came from Mr., was it Chris Costello on Garnet Stetson? What was his last name? Anybody know? His second point?
Corcoran.
Chris Corcoran, his second point. Does anyone remember what that was? I thought that was, he had three good points, but that one kind of got the short shrift. So I don't know if.
Are you talking about the live streaming, Mike?
The live streaming, yes, Michael. Yes. And I guess, and I appreciate Jen's comments, but my point, my point is, is that, you know, there are very, there are many ways to, for people to learn, and more so in the college ranks where people can simply sit and audit a class. And it would seem to me that live streaming a class, in addition to remote learning, might benefit a lot of children K to 12. So just to make that statement.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Anything else?
What's so funny, Janice?
No, I think that she's probably indicated we, you know, that it was, it's good to, it's good to hear you talk again, Mike. That's all.
I'm feeling better.
You're still in the dark, though.
I know. I will resolve that next time.
Okay.
I tried one thing. It didn't work.
No, thank you for your comments. Any other business? Any other members? Seeing none. Future agenda items we have here, handbooks, which we'll need to go over. We'll need to put on our schedule for our meetings. I'm assuming we'll continue to celebrate student learning. No, no, that was last week. That was, yep. So celebrate student learning. If we can somehow incorporate that into our meetings, October through May, we will hope to have to the high school representative or representatives on our school committee. We usually have them report each of the beginning of our meetings. Obviously, if we have them weekly, we are not going to have updates weekly, I don't think. And I'm showing here page two of the calendar with school start times. Have that as a future agenda. I'm not sure exactly what that means. But we'll confirm those. Anything else? Again, we voted on the policy for face coverings, correct? So we don't have another meeting until the 14th, unless we have some sort of emergency that we need to convene. But hopefully, we do not, and all of us can take a little bit of time to not preparing and not attending meetings, and we get one Monday night back, first one since, I don't know, beginning of June, maybe. So with that, I have nothing else. Anything else by any of the committee? All right, I would take a motion to adjourn at 8:59.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Hayes, second by Long. Gates, yes. Brain leaning.
Yes.
Lindblom?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you all. Happy Labor Day.